Okay, alright, we're rocking and rolling. Alright, we're going to call to order the two hundred and forty-sixth session of the tenth council study session, July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one at six P M. at the Bowen Center, fifty-two Bagley Street, Michigan four eight three four one. Roll call, Mr. Doyle.
Miller.
Present.
Petola.
Here.
Shramsky. Taylor Burks. Waterman. Williams.
Present.
Present, yeah.
Okay, I need authorization to excuse Councilwoman Shramsky and pro Tim Carter.
Move to the power.
I just been moved and supported. Any discussion? Okay, well, Carter just walked in, so I will draw my motion. So we need a motion to excuse Councilwoman Shramsky.
So moved.
I just been moved by Petola, supported by Taylor Burks. Any discussion? CNN roll call.
Petola.
Yeah.
Taylor Burks. Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Present.
This is excuse. Excuse. Shramsky.
Excuse.
My bad. Miller.
Yes.
Six yeas, no names.
Okay, this brings us to amendments to the agenda. I would like to add, Commissioner Powell, under the approval of the minutes for item number two.
Well, would that be one A, being we have a two?
Yes, one A, sounds great. Okay, and then, so we need a roll call.
Taylor Burks. Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Petola.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion to move everything but items number six, seven, sixteen, and fourteen from the agenda.
Um, can you explain why?
Till next week. So the items that need to, this is study session, the items that need to be voted on is the Great Lakes Crossing, uh, get Great Lakes contract extension because it's time system, and also the, uh, police, uh, public safety overtime needs to be on there because they need to be able to hire the people that are there. Uh, the actuarial study needs to be done as is done annually, uh, which is item number sixteen. And I think it was something else that I said. So items, again, I'll go through the items that I want to cover in this agenda, which will be six, seven, fourteen, sixteen.
Um, Mr. Chair, may I give you some important information about things that will hold up for retiree healthcare? Uh, because of one of the agenda items that I, I would like to advise you to please not defer that. May I give you that information?
Go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Alright, so I'm, as you're taking all these items off the agenda, I'm just trying to follow, so.
Can you just go to the retiree healthcare, that's what you asked.
Well, there's another, a couple of other things that you may want to know about. Sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen are things that are pertinent to the retiree healthcare that we're trying to restore. Uh, and if we move along expeditiously, we can get that done by October first, as we've been promising our retirees. So please include those items on the agenda, uh, if there's no reason to particularly push them back. But also, the Department of Public Works. Yeah, I do want to tell you also about, there are some projects for Public Works that will be delayed or maybe not being done for the city. If you continue to move them back, they've been moved back three or four weeks already. So I do have to advise you about that. The citizens do want their roads and their streets repaired.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So you should just remember that you are maybe delaying these or maybe canceling these.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Councilwoman Waterman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As it relates to the resolutions that the Executive Office has placed on the agenda, we had a retiree finance subcommittee today, and these are some of the things I'd like to bring to your attention. Um, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen can wait until after we have our, our board meeting on Wednesday. And what I'd like to bring to your attention and to let you know as it relates, when I had my meeting today to give you a summation, as seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, when we have the eight million dollars that the mayor is proposing into the opt-out, I'm going to read the notes that I did. It says, "The settlement agreement allows the retirees to opt out, and we found out as of now, and there might be some more, there's like two hundred and seventy retirees who have opted out. Um, opt out of the new Viva in exchange for a one-time payment of twenty thousand dollars. The city Viva is aware of the opt-outs totaling five point two million dollars. However, they're looking for up to eight million dollars because, uh, I think they extended the, um, opt-outs until August, which we didn't know. We thought the end was April, but I found out today that it was extended until April the first, so that's why it might go up to eight million dollars. Um, secondly, the IRS Treasury Regulation provides that upon termination of a pension plan, after satisfaction of all fixed liabilities and participants and beneficiaries, the employer may recover any excess assets remaining in the trust that are due. So, uh, then, in the instance of a situation that the city agreed through the settlement agreement, that to have our, um, GRS at a hundred and thirty percent, everything over the a hundred and thirty percent will go into the Viva, that's the healthcare. So that is something that we're going to be discussing tomorrow at our board meeting. Uh, also, I was advised by Mayor Moore, who is one of the representatives on the Viva account, that yes, CIPRA, uh, is an agreement with the city, but they did want to bring it before the board, before we moved forward. So that's why I'm going to ask, uh, my colleagues to wait until after the board has talked, and then I will bring this back to you for us to be able, uh, to move forward. But as it relates to sixteen, yes, we need to move forward because we don't have the healthcare, uh, in place as of yet, and that will continue to four hundred dollars.
Yeah, so, uh, thank you, uh, Councilwoman Waterman. So again, the resolution that I'm asking for to put on the agenda today is item six, seven, fourteen, and sixteen. Is there a motion?
So, so, Mr. President, so you're taking a special presentation, so?
Taking everything except for item six.
Time that we said that you want a special presentation only on study sessions, not formal session.
Three up.
It's two.
So.
They can be, it's not like it's a dose of life-threatening, they can go to the next study session.
Okay, so, six, seven, fourteen, and sixteen. Is there a motion?
Move.
Is there support? It's been moved and supported. Any city council discussion? Any city council discussion? CNN roll call.
Taylor Burks. Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Petola.
No.
Shramsky. That was a yes. Um, six yeas, one name.
Okay, now I need a motion to approve that agenda as amended.
Move, support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Taylor Burks, supported by Councilwoman Waterman. Any city council discussion?
I'm sorry?
Any city council discussion?
Yeah, um, my discretion is, my answer is no, because we need to conduct city business. Last week, you called this meeting when we had electrical lines retreat down. It was safer to be in the brick building here than it was to be on the road when you couldn't see the rain. But you called that life emergency. It was safer here than there. Not conducting any city business when we keep following these issues. We need to go forward with them.
So, okay, any other discussion? Roll call.
Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller. Petola.
No.
Shramsky. Taylor Burks. Six yeas, one name.
Agenda is approved. Alright, which brings us to approval of minutes from July twentieth, twenty twenty-one. There a motion?
Move.
I support it because I see that the clerk did add what he neglected to have in here last week regarding the public safety. Thank you.
Uh, so again, per Robert's procedure order, motions are to be made with no commentary connected, so just for future reference. So it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? CNN roll call.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter. Miller. Petola.
Yeah.
Shramsky. Taylor Burks. Waterman.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no names.
Okay, which brings us to item one A, which is Commissioner Angela Powell.
Hello, again, I am Oakland County Commissioner Angela Powell, and I want to say hello to our mayor, Deidre Waterman, and all of the council members. Today, I'm bringing two presentations. I have two proclamations for two of our council members. And I thought today would be a great time to present it to these two individuals who have decided not to continue, um, as council members for the next term. And I'm going to start with Patrice Waterman. And, um, we know on proclamations, you basically give a review of her life and everything that she's done for the city. For time's sake, I'm not going to read her proclamation, I'm going to go more personal. Councilwoman Patrice Waterman has been in this position for thirty-six years. She's been a grassroots supporter of many, she's done the work, and it would be selfish of us to not acknowledge her for that. And I just want to say for me, as your commissioner, anytime I call this lady, and we all know she does not answer, and she responds when she is ready to respond. But I love that about her because at the same time, you have to, as elected officials, make that personal time. Because yes, we are public servants, but at the same time, we have to make time for ourselves, and at the same, um, she's just always been there. She's supportive, she's dependable, she's call, she's a executor. It's a lot of us that give a lot of lip service. But she has been a executor, and what she do, and when she say she can do what she do it, and when she can't, she is very honest and transparent. And that's what I love about Councilwoman Patrice Waterman. So with, I could, I could actually maybe write a book about her, but that's the key thing that I want to say about this lady. I love her. And even when I had my tough times to talk to her, she was always there for me. And being out there at that county is something different, and it's a lot that I didn't know. But I had people like a Patrice Waterman that I could call, who stood there by my side to help and support me through whatever I called her for. So thank you on behalf of the Oakland County Commissioners, thank you on behalf of the City of Pontiac, thank you on behalf of this community, and thank you on behalf of myself, your Commissioner Angela Powell. And next is Councilman President Kermit Williams. I want to take another angle with Kermit because, first off, he's been representing us twelve years in this position. And I know we both started a little young, we both was at high school advocating for the kids in the school. But me and Kermit kind of started together. And what I can say is for Kermit, I know we, we always have our own aspirations of what we want to, what we want to be. And from ally to ally, I know we have disagreed, we have agreed, but we've worked together well. And what I want to say to you is, sometimes God put us in a position of things that we want, but he put you in a position, because guess what? One thing I know about you is you represent our community from a cultural standpoint, hands down. I won't give that recognition to nobody. Pontiac, if I could tell y'all one person that fight for us to make sure we get the resources, especially from a cultural African-American standpoint, is that man up there, Kermit Williams. He didn't just start with Oakland Ford, just being executive director. We both started from the grassroots. We both did the legwork, we both went our separate ways across this state, networked to figure out what we can do and be the people that we are to represent this city right now, and we're doing both well. For what we can do, for what situations that we're put in. So, it has been a tough journey for you, I've watched you, but you did what you thought was best and what you could give. And I just want to say for you, you've given it twelve years, I'm looking forward to seeing what you're going to do with Oakland Ford, and whatever God has for you, because he has more for both of us. This ain't just it for us, we still got work to do. But thank you for everything, thank you from county commissioners at the county, again, from the community, and from the City of Pontiac, and myself, your County Commissioner Angela Powell. And again, I want to thank council for allowing me, Councilwoman Mayor for allowing me to take the time to present those two. And, um, I love you all, good luck with everything, and, uh, let me know if y'all need any assistance. Y'all have a blessing.
Commissioner Powell, uh, now it brings us to public comments. Pro Tim Carter.
Uh, first would be, um, H. Bill Maxey, and then Quincy Stewart on deck. Good evening, Mr. and Mrs. Pontiac, and governors. Tonight, I'm wearing one of my several hats. I want to go back to the remarks I made last week, when I talked about the equal opportunity employment with Pontiac Public Works, and about the code violations. I did not leave an address, and I would ask that you take this number, because I need a response. It is in the records, a matter of record. One zero five three, one zero five three Oxford Road, Pontiac, Michigan, four eight three four one. And I would expect the mayor's office to have that response and information to me on a week from today. Now, tonight, I began with the code infect, uh, code infection, wow, court enforcement, pardon me. And, uh, I can say this, my councilman started on this a year ago. And to this point, the violations are still there. Dumping grounds, there's no safety net, there's a hole in the ground, there's nothing that this independent company could have done less than to be on Archit Lake, running east and west, and to see this ugly sight. Secondly, Pontiac Public Works, we have met, Mr. Bass and I, and, uh, Ken, we've met. It appears as if they're going to look at equal opportunity employment, which means a contract compliance officer and a mayor executive order. Let me say this quickly. You realize it's about three million dollars, a contract, and not a one. African-American company is represented. I understand there is one. This is just a part of it. So you, council approved four, five, and six, and I guarantee you, there is not one African-American company among them. We have to stop this. We have to get and continually push the mayor, continually push the mayor's office. This is E O E. You've already violated types six and seven of the E O code. And I guarantee you this, if on about the seventh, uh, next Tuesday, we do not get a response, when I see that is community activists, H. Bill Maxey, Bob Bass, Ken Anderson, Quincy Stewart, just a few of our working on the ground, stepping cadence committed, you will hear from us, and I do have the address for civil rights. After all, I did serve on the Civil Rights Commission, ha, surprise, community relations. I was appointed there five, ten years ago. So, uh, get that in order. Thank you, sir. Mr. Quincy Stewart up next, and. Let me have, steal the conversation, Mr. Stewart.
I'm sorry.
And, and Cobb on Fisher Street would be on deck. Thank you, sir.
As we look to another election, let us dispassionately look at a brief history of how Pontiac got to where it is today. We all know that at one time Pontiac was an industrial hub, beginning as a horse carriage and furniture manufacturing mecca, creating thousands of jobs at plants in the mills. And that quickly became auto manufacturing plants, when, which created even more employment. And during the thirties, forties, and fifties, and nineteen sixties, thousands of people, especially black folks, came as migrants and refugees from the agrarian racist Jim Crow South to the industrialized North, looking for jobs in plants with the city, some as teachers, and the other ancillary jobs associated with the plants. Yet, as we moved to the nineteen eighties, a slow but steady decline in plant jobs began, and by the nineteen nineties and early two thousands, GM was all but gone, and Pontiac was left with no contingency plan or any semblance of capacity building to supplant this exitist due to poor leadership. There was a time of mass employment, no resources, a dead downtown, blight, a predictable uptick in crime, a dwindling school district, and very little help from Washington D.C. or Lansing. To add insult to injury, the city was hit broadside by Public Acts seventy-two, four, and four thirty-six, stripping local government of control, and the outrageous unconstitutional and inhumane reign of economic terrorism led by so-called emergency managers, began culminating in the awful reign of white supremacist Lou Schimel. Curse it, be his name. There was a small number of us, including Kermit Williams, and at that time, private citizen Gloria Miller, and a few more of us who led protest after protest, went to Waterford Council meetings to thwart the usurpation of the Pontiac Fire Department, only to be disrespected, glared at, and ignored. We went to Lansing, supported Benton Harbor and other majority-black populated municipalities who were suffering the same inundations. We led recalls against Leon Jekowski, who literally sold us down the river for a morsel of bread, and I even went to Detroit City Council as a guest speaker, warning them what was coming down the road. As Pontiac reinvents herself from the move, move from industry as we knew it to technology now, is nearly complete. We need a revamping of the school district, which is now moving in a good direction, and to get these new jobs, and as Auburn Hills becomes more landlocked, and these new industries will have to occupy more space in Pontiac, new innovative and well-schooled leadership will be needed to manage this paradigm, which we do not have. As black folks, we can only give so much credence to just electoral politics and ask ourselves the crucial question, what will we do? What will we do to prepare our children to be ready to not just participate as employees of these new technology businesses, but to create their own? No matter what rhetoric we hear from politicians, self-determination is still our key to true survival, as opposed to total dependence.
Thank you. Is it, uh, Tuchelle Cobb? Twenty-four Fisher Avenue? Mr. Kenny Anderson? Okay, Mr. Chuck Johnson? Not here. Uh, Mr. Marle McAdams? Alright, Mr. Robert Bass?
Mr. Chair.
And Karen Jurgensen on deck.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Robert L. Bass, and I am the executive director of Assistant District Council in District One. And I come to do two short things if I may, and the first is to bring first. And with that, uh, I want to go to the employees. There's only a very few employees of the city. And until the other day, it kind of escaped me of how hard they actually worked for this city over the last three, uh, eight years, plus. Maybe ten to twenty, at best, uh, Pontiac employees have carried this city on their backs and done the best that they could. And when I talked to one, and he shared his, uh, his frustration of complaints coming in regarding things that they weren't doing. I had to take credit for some of that, because I'm one of the ones that turned in some of the complaints, and this woman is who I sent them to. So, so I had to take ownership of that. However, it's all of our fault, and I ask if you would indulge me at this time, and stand, and give all the employees of the City of Pontiac a hand for taking care of our business, as difficult as it has been, because they deserve it. I thank each and every one of them for all that they've been through and all they've endured over the last eight years or more. So, with that, one other thing, we're in election time, when, oh, things, people go crazy. Their attitudes get bad, they start disliking people that they work with, start calling other folks names and whatnot. I just want to make it very clear, and we've done this year after year for the last forty years. Council belongs to us. The mayor belongs to us. We don't belong to them. So all of you that are making enemies right now, you're going to have to sit those seats, if you get those seats. You're going to have to sit those seats to the very people that you call yourself mayor now and not speaking to. You're going to have to come back through here. Rest assured, we're not going anywhere. How long you will sit that seat is another question. Thank you so very much. Thank you so very much.
Karen Jorgensen and Ms. Ruffin on deck?
Uh, good evening, um, mayor and city council, and I would also like to thank Patrice Waterman and Kermit Williams for your years of being such a force for Pontiac. Um, I'm a resident at thirty-five North Saginaw, and I'm a co-owner of Pontiac Civil Art Theater and the Green Room Cafe. Um, initially, I was working with Perry Earl, who a lot of you know, and is on Pontiac Library Board, and we were looking at the grounds of the library and decided that we needed to take it upon ourselves to begin a cleanup because, as Mr. Bass had mentioned, uh, the employees of Pontiac have a lot of responsibilities. So we were trying to figure out a way to initiate this program. And as I was also walking down the street with Patrick, who's our new Director of Code Enforcement, he received a phone call from one of the medical students at Oakland University and said that he was planning to bring some students down to help with the cleanup. Well, this little initial cleanup of the library, and with the blessing of the city, um, I met with them today, and they have three dates that they would like to help the city. Our first date will be this Saturday from nine a.m. to one p.m., and we have sixty medical students that will be here. Um, as I was talking to him, we first had thirty, and two hours later, it doubled. Uh, they are also going to make themselves available for the twenty-eighth and September eleventh. And we will start with the library, work our way to the courthouse, and do the landscape of, uh, the Saginaw Street, uh, to include the flowers and planters and so on. And as I was reaching out for, um, some help on this, um, two of the employees from Code Enforcement, uh, volunteered to help us out on Saturday. And Tim Travis, who's always there for us from Goldner Walsh, said that he would help out and volunteer, and my phone has been ringing like crazy with people wanting to step in. My other passion for this is because we have a beautiful, big opportunity with M1 Concourse bringing in four big events. The biggest one is Motor Bella, and if any of you not familiar with it, it's going to be replacing the, um, North American International Auto Show, which actually originated in eighteen ninety-nine. And I looked up the stats, and for their last event, which was postponed because of COVID, and they were going to do a different venue in, in the summer, their attendance in twenty eighteen was eight hundred thousand people. And they figured that it generated about five hundred million dollars to the local economy. So for us to, um, roll up our sleeves and make our downtown look welcoming is one of the plans that Perry Earl and I decided to start out with. And so if there's anyone that would like to donate time money.
No, Mel? Yes. And then Mel.
Good evening, everyone. Um, Honorable Mayor and Honorable Counsel, I just want to say hello, uh, to Pontiac residents. Um, I want to, um, there's a saying, you give people their flowers, you know, while they're, while they yet live. And I want to say thank you to Councilwoman Waterman in District One, um, for her service. I have worked with her throughout my career at, uh, Oakland County, and, um, as Ms. Powell says, she's always been there. And I just want to thank you personally and publicly for your service. I know being a public servant is not easy. There's a lot that you all have to deal with that we don't see, so, um, thank you. I also want to say thank you to Kermit Williams. I appreciate all that you have done in your effort as a leader, um, on the council. I know it's not easy, and thank you. I want to remind everyone, as we know, there's an election coming up, and I hope you, when you go out to vote, that you do your due diligence on the candidates, that you study the issues, and that you vote your voice and the best candidate, uh, who's looking to move the community forward. I hope you choose someone with character, and you look at things like integrity, and I hope you consider, um, someone who can get along with others as well. I think it's important that people, um, dig in because when you elect people, you elect the best of who you are as an electorate. It's very important. So I encourage people to also know where their poles are, what precincts they're in as well. I think it's important that you exercise your franchise. Thank you again for all who are serving as public servants, we need you, and it's important. As I know again, it's not easy, and I say thank you, you give a lot of yourselves to this community. Sometimes it doesn't even seem like you're appreciated, but do know I appreciate you. Thank you. I was always a politician from the days the civil rights people chose me as their protest singer. That was said by the late, great Nina Simone. Throughout this race, I watched my community become so divided. Some use hearsay to smear candidates, some use emails, some use community groups, and some use social media. But my question is, what will happen when the dust settles? In my forty-two years on this earth, I've seen people alive destroyed simply because they want to make a difference, and it's came at a great cost. Who did it help at the end? It's so easy for the sideline people to have targets for those who stand up, for those who are not as connected as they think they do. As I looked in the mirror, I'm proud to be Pontiac born and bred, but I'm ashamed of some of the people in my community recently. And age does not always make you wise. I was such a family in the first line of ministry, and I want to give my community hope. We as a community must stop being so, so, being the splendor of hate, misogyny, and downright disrespect. I believed in this. On Thursday, when I had my fall, I saw the humanity in their leadership. It made me have great hope. I watched Kermit turn back around and take me to the hospital to make sure my ankle wasn't broke. I watched Gloria Miller and Megan, who had to pray over me to make sure that I could set it back in place. I watched Patrice call immediately to make sure that I was all right. And it gave me hope in what leadership could be, because at the end of the day, it wasn't about me being a candidate. It was about making sure I was safe, and that's the Pontiac I grew up in, and that's the Pontiac I love. So on August the third, you're going to hear a lot of different things, and I employ the community to vote with their conscience, to vote with their hearts, and to vote with those who actually understand what the Pontiac City is, which is a community, and we're a family. And good and bad, at the end of the day, you got to still live here. And the question is, where is your integrity at the things that you say? I thank you for your time, have a great evening.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, any public comments?
Thank you, Pro Tim Carter, which brings us to item number six, resolution to approve a one-year extension for Great Lakes Contracting Solutions, LLC for roadway maintenance program. Uh, we've talked about this in general, the contract is included, is there a motion? Also, we need to suspend the rules to vote on it. Okay, is there a motion to suspend the rules to vote on item number six and seven?
Sound move.
Okay, roll call on suspending the rules?
Yes, Miller? Idella?
Yes.
Shramsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks? Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Seven A's, no names.
Item number six is a resolution to approve a one-year extension for Great Lakes Contracting Solutions LLC for roadway maintenance program. Is there a motion? Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman Idella, supported by Councilwoman Taylor Burks, any city council discussion? Seeing now roll call?
Miller? Idella?
Yes.
Shramsky? Taylor Burks? Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Seven A's, no names.
Okay, which brings us to item number seven, which is a resolution to approve a one-year extension for Great Lakes Power and Light for Street Light Maintenance?
Move.
Support.
Okay, I'll take the support from Taylor Burks. Any discussion? Seeing now roll call?
Idella?
Yes.
Shramsky? Taylor Burks? Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller? Seven A's, no names.
Okay.
Thank you.
Who, who has the question? Oh, uh, excuse me, Mr. Siddiqui, uh, you have a question from, uh, Councilwoman Miller?
In your email, but maybe you missed, didn't see it, maybe you didn't see it. Um, Walton, that term signal, when do we expect for it to have it back on?
Sterling Lakes?
How many?
Yeah, Sterling Lakes.
Yes, right, Sterling Lakes.
I, I replied to your email today, I was on vacation last week, so sorry about that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, it's active this morning, it was, the, the signals were working.
Oh, it's working now?
Yeah.
Okay, good, okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, which brings us to item number fourteen, I believe, Mr. Clerk? Okay, uh, which is a resolution to approve a budget amendment for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, uh, twenty twenty-two to allocate additional three thousand five, uh, third, uh, three, three hundred fifty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars and zero cents, uh, the overtime budget for public safety services.
Move.
We can't, we can't, we have to actually. It has to be published in the paper.
Okay.
So we need to suspend the rules to actually vote to publish this paper.
Mr. President, while we're suspending rules, why don't we suspend the rules for sixteen as well?
Okay.
Sound move to suspend the rules for thirteen, fourteen, and sixteen.
Okay. All right, roll call on suspending the rules?
Shramsky? Taylor Burks? Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter? Miller? Idella?
Yes.
Seven A's.
Okay, uh, there are motion to publish the budget amendment, uh, I do have a question for, uh, the Finance Director, if he's here. So I'm, yeah.
He's here.
He's here, and while he's walking to the podium, I will introduce this, as I have each year made that recommendation to the council.
Madam Mayor, huh?
Um, I am, uh, he's, uh, Mr., Mr.
Excuse me.
Yes, Mr. Darren is here at mine.
You have to be recognized by the Chair, Madam Mayor.
I would like to be recognized, please.
At this time, I just told Mr. Carrington I had a question in regards to a resolution that has a motion already on the floor. Question was, was the part-time officer included in this three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar sum?
Uh, uh, it was not, I, uh, did not, uh, get an update from Captain Ewing. I did attempt to try and call him, uh, shortly before the meeting. The only, in my notes, the only number I had was thirty thousand from last, yesterday's subcommittee meeting. Um, but I did not, uh, get a confirmation from, from Captain Ewing on that amount. So I would request that we do make some allocation in order to, um, you know, allow for that, uh, you know, allow for that expense, as it was discussed at the subcommittee meeting yesterday.
Okay, so can we, uh, turn to the.
To piggyback off that, and this would probably be to the clerk, uh, in terms of the publishing, do you have to have the actual figure, or can they, so you do have to have the actual figure?
So can we just add forty thousand, please say?
What? Or potentially, maybe you can say a sum not to exceed, and so whatever that difference is would go back into the general.
And, and just a point of clarification, um, the, the amendment as it's currently written, um, specifies for the overtime budget. That forty thousand would go into the, the regular contractual services, um, amount. Um, but if, if you, you know, give me the indication of, of that amount, I can make sure I get the, uh, resolution updated into the clerk accordingly.
So, Council President, would it, and this is probably to the Finance Director, would it be cleaner then to do two budget amendments, then one for the overtime and then one for the part-time person? So they can act now for the overtime, and then when you get the figure for the overtime?
Or act now for the, act now for the overtime and then.
I'm sorry, then the part-time person.
Um, I mean, I'm, I'm fine just to, you know, if we can just go ahead and do it, do it as such. I mean, I can, I can give the language for, if, if we need the language now, um.
Well, the clerk is saying he needs the language for the, to publish, for the figure.
Well, Mr. Clerk, how, how should we, how should we word that? I mean, if that was something that was stated that we, we discussed in the Finance Subcommittee, but what was the, the number that we had prior when we were trying to bring, um, the part-time, I thought it was twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, it was, it was thirty thousand.
Okay, well, why don't we just put that thirty thousand in there?
Yes.
Right, but.
Which he would have to provide, yes, that's the point.
We can, we can put the account number there, so, um, so the, the resolution to publish would be to say, to approve a budget amendment for the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, to allocate an additional, uh, three hundred fifty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars to the overtime budget for public safety, and an additional thirty thousand dollars in contractual service for a part-time sheriff.
Clerk need the number for that?
Okay.
Is there, is there a motion to publish?
Move.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported, any city council discussion?
Sure, um, I, I have gotten that, I can provide that to you in writing. Um, it, it was pretty consistent with what I had indicated, but I'll, I'll, uh, prepare that response in writing, um, and we'll submit that for you.
Okay. Roll call?
Burks? Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller? Idella?
Yes.
Shramsky?
Yes.
Seven A's.
Okay, motion passes.
Mr. President?
Uh, yes, Councilwoman.
I voted yes, but can you explain to me what the part-time employee is for? I thought of the Sheriff Department, are we going to have a non-union employee working the city hall?
I know, uh, this person, um, we have got numerous complaints, it's all council people, and I'm pretty sure you can agree with this too, about people in the city parking on both sides of the street, people not being able to get out. And so, uh, what we talked about in the subcommittee was having somebody, uh, that wouldn't take our regular deputies off the street to deal with that minor thing, but just to go up and down the streets, run their shift, and make sure that people are obeying the parking regulations of the city.
Oh, thank you, that's the first I heard about it, that's why I had to ask, thank you.
Okay, all right. Which brings us to item number sixteen, resolution to request the actuarial study and extension of supplemental pension benefits from GERS retirees.
Um, Mr. President, if I could just interject here briefly, um, I, uh, I did err in drafting that ordinance in the sense that I left out the police and fire. Um, I did have a conversation with the legal counsel from police and fire, um, and confirmed that we should include them. I, I do have a revised resolution, basically just the same language, but we just want to include, uh, the police and fire, um, pension system um, in the resolution. The one distinction is that there are only certain police and fire retirees who receive that supplemental payment. Um, it is retired, police and fire retirees to retire report, uh, December nineteen ninety-six, I believe. They're referred to as the pre-ninety-six retirees, um, but we do want to request the, um, same, um, supplemental report from the Police and Fire, uh, Board as well.
Councilwoman Waterman, I heard you sit on the, the GERS board, um, but I know this doesn't have to be done until, um, thirty.
No, we, we have to pass it now, so by when the thirty first comes, because they have to get the actuarial. So we need to pass it now, so when the thirty first comes, it will continue to extend for them to get their four hundred dollars until everything is complete. extend for them to get their four hundred dollars until everything is complete. So we need to, we...
I guess I always thought that the police and fire were separate.
They are.
They are, but we have some police and fire that are part of GURS. They are. There are some that are in the GURS. Walter Moore was a police, was a firefighter. He is a part of GURS, but we also need to take care of the police and fire as well.
Um, Mr. Chair? Yeah, uh, technically, this should have been done, uh, and the, uh...
Last month.
The, uh, Finance Director admits that he did not do that the way it's, uh, should have been done. We should have had two ordinance amendments for this council to consider.
Right.
So he has one here for GURS, but the other one he needs is police and fire, which is customarily the way we have considered that, uh, in the years past. Every year, I've recommended councils that they do extend that and have pension payments. So, um, do you have both, do you have the second ordinance, uh, uh, Mr. Carrington?
So, it, so, um, Madam Mayor, it's, it's a resolution, and the language just speaks to both.
Do you have the second one, do you, or do you need a different one?
I have, I have, I have an updated resolution that includes the, uh, both PNF and GURS.
Normally, we do it, and we've done it every year. If you want to loop into one because you don't have the second one, then just explain that to the council.
So we, we, we have a problem here, because I don't have any documentation, um, Madam Mayor. So, uh, even if you guys knew that you were going to put this on agenda instead of putting banners on the Ewok, you guys should have made sure we had a resolution for, uh, for the, the police and retirees. We do that every year.
To that question and respond to that.
So, um, Council President, if we could just proceed with the, um, resolution that is before, which speaks to the GURS in, in, um, response to, uh, and follow up to what Councilwoman Waterman indicated, we do need to, uh, have the resolution approved in order to give the actuary time to, uh, prepare that report. And talking with the Police and Fire Council, um, I can bring back that, uh, correct resolution, uh, next week. The police and fire, they do not, uh, need as much time in getting that res, in getting that report, uh, prepared. So I would, uh...
So we can pass the resolution that's in the package?
Correct.
We can bring, uh, police and fire next week?
Correct.
Okay, well, let's do that. That sounds great. Your motion?
Move.
Support.
All right, any city council discussion? No, no, we already voted. I'm talking about, this is, this is just voting on item number sixteen as it is, not to change that he's made. The one that's in our package is what we voted. We get a police and fire. All right, it's been moved and supported. Any other discussion? Seeing now roll call?
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller? Idella?
Yes.
Shramsky? Taylor Burks? Seven years, no names.
Okay, motion passes. Uh, we will adjourn this meeting at six fifty-eight, oh, six fifty-three, sorry.